No extra money for the DA down there.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
And comes out.
Well, it's always encouraging to see a lot of the non-varying acreage. You know, there's eighteen.
No, it's down, it's down. Thirteen last year, it's ten ninety.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. At this time, we will stand for the flag salute. We will be led today by Supervisor Shuckley.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. All right, we will kick off Board of Supervisors Matters this morning with Supervisor Worthley.
It really took me by surprise.
I look for my fellow colleagues who's least prepared.
Well, let me just say that tomorrow and the next day, I will be in Bass Lake where Airborne Retreats. It's always a great time to get together and get kind of a looking forward into the coming year strategy-wise. I know one of the big things tomorrow and next day will be a report about the funding from the State of California through in Captain Trade. A significant number of dollars are being earmarked for air quality projects, and traditionally, we have scored very well in San Joaquin Valley as far as receiving that funding, so I look forward to that. Really, we had an ad hoc finance committee meeting last Thursday. More information about what to do about our retirement obligations going forward, and that'll be coming up. I'm sure we'll have a little bit of discussion about that today during our budget hearing. Really, other than that, I have nothing more to contribute today. Thanks.
All right, Supervisor Shuckley.
Yes, as most of you probably read in the paper, is that better, Mike? What's this?
Your mic's not on.
It's not? How's this? Can you hear me now? I typically don't. It's on. Maybe it's your hearing, Sheriff.
You're getting up here, man.
I didn't see a hearing aid in the proposed budget.
Is that better, Mike? All right, thank you. So, you probably read and hopefully read in the paper that this weekend, there were some senseless, I think all acts of vandalism is senseless at Mooney's Grove, so we can just, if you know anybody who did it, let me know, and we'll take care of them, right, Sheriff? Okay. Friday, I'll be heading to Stockton for the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting, which is more fondly known as the Amtrak Committee, and actually, we'll be talking about the express, morning express service from Fresno to Sacramento that we will be launching in January, which will get travelers, business travelers, whatnot, to Sacramento by eight AM and return home the same day. So, for business and things like that, that'll be a great service. And then tomorrow, we have our task force on homelessness meeting also. So, we've got some good things coming up.
All right, Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. I have, last week on Friday, I attended an open house for Sun Treat, which is now a part of AC Foods up in Supervisor Worthley's district, just outside of Dinuba, and they're a citrus packing house in Griffith Farms, some may know them as, also under Legacy. They've got several different names. I'm not really sure what they're going to settle on. But they're opening a new line, they're having a partnership with Family Tree Farms to have, be a year-round operation to do not only citrus, which is really historically what they've been involved with now, to stone fruit as well. And it's state-of-the-art, it's phenomenal. Having worked for a short period in a citrus packing house, it's quite a, it was, it's quite an operation there. It's large, it's in the county, and so it's generating revenue so that we can, so all you department heads can have maybe a few more bucks come next go-around, next year in the budget time. So, it's a phenomenal facility, and I hope we get more investments from our local business community like that. Tomorrow, I have, I will be attending as a guest our county's Ag Policy Advisory Committee, and really to discuss some things that we've talked about at this board. In particular, we spoke about this at our Lindsay Evening Meeting regarding the potential threat of Wong Long being a pet of the citrus industry, and what's happened in Florida, losing sixty percent of its acreage, and the impact that that could have on our county, as we will find out later on how big citrus is when you combine the lemons, the tangerines or mandarins, and the navel valentias, and that, you know, it's, citrus is our largest, if you combine them all, commodity that we have. And so, it has the impact of losing that acreage to really reduce the value of our property, which impacts all of your guys' budgets. And so, that, you know, making sure, as well as jobs in our communities that are highly involved and invested in this, what has been a crop for us for over a hundred years. So, I want, we're exploring options as far as how to be proactive and to make sure that if the county can do something, then what that looks like as far as making sure that we're helping the industry and the efforts to ensure that we can minimize any impacts in the future. So, with that, I'm finished with my report.
All right, Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. My niece, Brittany Hefner, won the Supreme Champion steer at the Tulare County Fair, and she also won Supreme Champion here for, so I'm pretty proud of that. And then my wife bought me a ticket on one of the beefs, I think it was the Reserve Champion, and I won half of that. And so, boy, I had a good weekend as far as that.
Are you going to have a barbecue?
What time's the barbecue?
Form seven hundred.
There's a lot of hungry people there. No, I was getting a little bit low. I was getting a little low on beef, you know, I was down about half-bread or something, you know.
Very thankful. We'll be right over.
Very thankful. So, anyway, Saturday night, we had the Sierra View Medical Center big event there in Porterville, and Sheriff Budrow was one of our judges for the dancers, and he did an exceptional job. I didn't know he knew that much about choreography and all this fancy stuff he kept talking about, and, boy, that song was great. It reminds me of my days, and, you know, it was, it was, it was good. You did a good job, Sheriff. Did a very good job. But that was a very nice event, over five hundred people there, sold out, and the dance alone, the dancers raised fifty-five thousand dollars for Sierra Medical Center. What a great deal. Then Sunday, I was at the Congregational Church for Bells Across America. That started, Seventeenth starts Constitutional Week, which this week is Constitutional Week, and so, I presented a proclamation, as well as got up and tried to look halfway literate and even made a speech, so had a good time. Yesterday, we had the TCAG meeting in Porterville, and that's our Roads Tulare County Association of Governments, and that was a good meeting. It's short but sweet, got out of there in less than an hour. And then this Thursday, got the Ag Luncheon in Porterville, and as well as I've got a groundwater management plan. And then this weekend, I'm going to try to get up the hill and see what the devastation is up. And very thankful to the county fire for all they did up there. I mean, they, you know, they were responsible for saving some structures right there above Springville. If they hadn't been there, it'd have been like our Posey Fire Station. Some people might have lost their homes, so very, Chief, your personnel did a great job. But just looking forward to going up there and looking at, I'm going to get to go up one ninety and see all the devastation, and like the chief said in his little talk he had in Woodlake, every time we went up to the Upper Tulie Meeting, we'd look around and he'd look at me and he'd say, "Boy, if this ever catches fire, we're in trouble." And it happened, so. Thanks to everybody, the fire, the sheriff, and everybody that was in this pure fire and consumed almost forty thousand acres, so big fire for our area. Thank you. Thank you to all.
Mike's very grateful for the personal fire line that was built around his cabin and kept that thing standing, so great job, Chief, and Personnel. Real quick, last week at the fairground, I did mention at our evening meeting in Woodlake last week about the Veterans Quilt Ceremony that they started this year at the Tulare County Fair. I attended that event and was the MC, and I have to tell you, what a moving event, and for local quilters to donate their time and expertise to provide a series of veterans, I think they chose about twenty veterans to be recognized this year, and they're going to continue to do it on a go-forward basis. But these quilts were all American-themed and beautiful quilts, and I think that that, along with the new flagpole that was dedicated to honor our veterans, is a constant reminder of who we have to be thankful to for being able to enjoy our freedoms that we enjoy each and every day. Last thing I wanted to make mention of is that we will be having a Space Planning Ad-hoc Committee meeting today, this afternoon, and we'll be talking about the various capital projects that are going on in this county and new facilities for various departments and making sure those are all outfitted appropriately. Look forward to that, and hopefully, we'll be creating more ad hoc committees that Supervisor Crocker can serve on because he doesn't seem busy. So, that's all I have. We will close Board of Supervisors Matters.
Start with the Ledge Committee.
And move on to public comments. Item number two on the agenda at this time, members of the public may comment on any item within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda. Public comment cannon will be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here wishing to speak under public comment? I do have one request in front of me. That is from Dallin Brokaw.
I'm Dallin Brokaw, eight-four-one-A West Walnut, City of Isalia, and it's, I'm representing Gloria House. Do I have a red light somewhere? Because I'm known for my long speaking.
The clock's up on the screen.
Okay, great. This last week, you should have gotten a letter from our Executive Director, Kathy Looper, regarding the Journey Youth Coalition, which was founded this last year as a partnership to bring together those community stakeholders that were interested in helping out the homeless, exploited, and disadvantaged youth of Tulare County and of the City of Isalia. We put together a coalition, including the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, County Probation, Youth Services, CSET, and some of the Rescue Mission, and some of the other agencies here locally that are supporting youth. It started out with a meeting between myself, Kathy Looper, and Marriott CSET, when we were looking for gaps in the social services in the local area, and one of the biggest gaps we found were services for homeless youth between the ages of twelve and eighteen. So, we started looking at ways to fill that gap, and one of the ways to fill that gap is with an emergency youth shelter. We worked with the Police Department to get their input, the Sheriff's Department, Probation, to get their input, and then we purchased the property at eight-four-one-A West Walnut, which is the old farmhouse back in behind the neighborhood there. That's why we've got an A on our address. Over several thousand volunteer hours over the past two months, we've pretty much got the house into shape. We're working on a few more security projects, some fencing projects, alarm, closed circuit projects to about the tune of about another twenty-five thousand dollars. Then we'll be ready to open up, most likely, the middle of October. We're starting to vet staff now. We've got our budget together. We've got a couple grant opportunities that we're in for. One of them's the Cal OES Grant for Startups, and we're looking forward to hearing from Cal OES this next month. So, if you haven't read that piece of information from Kathy, please do so. If the Board of Supervisors would like a tour of the facility, my name is on the business card that was handed to you. We can arrange that for you to come out and take a look at what we've got going on, and we're looking forward to helping out the traffic, the disadvantaged, and the homeless youth of not only Isalia but also of Tulare County. Some of the projects we have in the future are a boys' home. We're looking, we've got several properties that we've got for emergency transitional shelter. So, those are some of the things that we're looking at, and that should be in your information. Thank you for your service, and I appreciate your time.
Great job following your time clock up there, too. You did a great job on that. Is there anybody else wishing to speak under public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it to the board. We will now take up our consent calendar, items four through thirty-two. Number twenty-five needs correction, which County Council will read into the record, and then item twenty-six should be specifically related to the D-39 Traver Canal Bridge Replacement Project. Council, you want to make the correction, please?
All right, so there is a new order available for public review this morning. It's a new order rescinding all remaining mandatory evacuations as of September fourteenth, and those remaining evacuations are Alpine Valley, Sequoia Crest, Pier Pont Springs, Doyle Springs, Washeon, Camp Nelson, Rogers Camp, and Mountaineer.
Okay, thank you very much. Any additional items to be pulled from the consent calendar by board members?
With approval.
Okay, any members from members of the public, any items want to be pulled? All right, I have a motion from Supervisor Shuckley and a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Worthley, you only get to vote once.
No, that should be a yes. No abstention.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously, even though Steve tried to vote twice. He clarified his vote was yes.
Yes, again, no.
Thank you very much for that, and the consent calendar has been approved. We will now move on to our untimed items, and we will take up item number thirty-three, which is a request from the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector to designate October fifteenth, twenty-seventeen through October twenty-first, twenty-seventeen as National Retirement Security Week. And our auditor's working her way up here. This is a little early, Rita. Were you just wanting to make sure that you got this presentation done before you retired, or what's the plan?
Well, we want to get preparations ready so that we can get articles into the grapevine and out to everybody, and it is an important subject, and I'm really only here to introduce Chris Glidden from HHSA. He is on our Defined Contribution Committee. He's the chairman of our Education Subcommittee, and he likes to send out articles to educate everybody about the importance of preparing for retirement. So, this is Chris Glidden.
Great, thank you, Rita.
Thank you, Rita. Good morning, members of the board, CEO Spada, Ms. Peterson. I'm actually starting my second term on the Defined Contribution Committee this year, representing District One. I'm pretty proud about that. I've been learning a lot since joining the committee and continued to grow. The plan is doing well. We're continuing to meet to monitor our investments and our policies. Right now, we have full-time participants. We have, just shy of twenty-five hundred participants, which is, it was just higher than the national average rate of participation for Defined Contribution Plans. We are just approaching ninety-five million dollars in assets, which we're closing on that hundred million dollar kind of milestone, so we're pretty excited about that. In the part-time plan, we have two-hundred-and-seventy-four participants with one-point-six-million dollars in assets. I'm going to be part of a group that's attending the annual Defined Contribution Conference next week, which is in Milwaukee, so really excited about that. The theme of that this year is behavioral finance, which is a pretty hot topic right now, and so, we're hoping to gather a lot of information and tools there to bring back that we can use to educate our participants on the importance in saving for retirement and for your future. One of the biggest things we're excited about this year is the twenty-five percent county match, up to fifteen hundred dollars a year in the Defined Contribution Plan, which has been extended from primary management class to a lot more of our general employees. So, we're really going to try to get the word out for folks to take advantage of that pretty much free money, you know, up to the fifteen hundred dollars per year. I say it's kind of like a reward or a club card, you know, you buy four and get one free, so. You know, like a Subway or pizza or something, so. I've got these articles kind of running around in my head that I'm planning on writing to try to educate some folks on that, so I thank you very much for your support of our Defined Contribution Plan. Do you have any questions about the plan or?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Supervisor Worthley.
I'm just curious, I know that now with our new tier in retirement, there's quite a reduction in terms of the benefits that go along with that. So, are we seeing our newer employees take advantage of the deferred comp plan as a way of augmenting their retirement, given the fact that the traditional retirement that the counties have provided, that we provide, is looking at, it'll be a dramatic change from our current practices?
Yes, we have seen some increase in numbers, and we are planning on increasing our education efforts. We've been also talking with Dave Keeler at Tisara about the Tier Four employees, especially the higher compensated Tier Four employees, which are going to be limited by a cap, so we don't want folks to have any surprises when it comes to retirement time that, hey, you know, I thought I was going to get this amount, and I'm only getting this amount. So, we do have plans to educate further on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, nice presentation. Rita, are you coming back for another bite at the apple, or are you?
No, I just wanted to make sure. He's only been on a couple years.
Did a great job.
Well, we do ask that you name the week as National Retirement Security Week, please.
Great.
With approval, Mr. Chairman.
You have a request in front of us. Have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we will take up item number thirty-four, which is a presentation given by the Tulare County Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer, regarding the 2016 Tulare County Agricultural Crop and Livestock Report. And I'm ready for some good news, Marilyn. What's that?
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure. Oh, you've got ice water running in your veins.
That's true.
That's true. Damn right.
We're here to present the Tulare County Crop and Livestock Report for 2016. We get all our statistics from grower surveys and information from packing sheds and cold storages and a lot of industry groups, and along with our state and federal partners. This year, we had a person move out of state in a very rapid pace, so it kind of took a village to put together these crop statistics and come up with cover ideas, so I really want to thank our staff for pitching in like this. And we've got a beautiful display of the kind of crops we grow in Tulare County, so that's all through support of our packing sheds. I also want to thank Art and the staff at the print shop because they did a week turnaround, including sending the report out for the fingerprint cover to an outside vendor, so I was pretty impressed and sweating bullets about that, but they did a wonderful job, and they were super easy to work with. So, again, we had an increase of fifty thousand four hundred acres of permanent plantings, mostly through pistachios and almonds, but still quite a few new walnut plantings going in. The crop that we expected to have a decrease was pomegranates. There was a couple of lean years, so some of those have been pulled out to, you know, make room for other plantings, and I was a bit surprised to see naval orange trees moving in as fast of a pace. We had our row crops decreased by seventy-three thousand acres. So, you know, you could, a year ago, we had a quarter of a million acres out of production due to the drought, so I think we're stabilizing somewhat. Our overall milk value is one-point-six billion dollars. That's down from one-point-seven billion dollars last year. It's a decrease of four percent, and we had about ten months of really lousy milk prices. It perked back up in November and December, but it wasn't enough to salvage the industry by any stretch because their expenses are so high. We had a hundred-and-eighty-four million pound decrease in milk produced. So, instead of being thirty percent of our overall crop and livestock value in our crop report, we're down about twenty-four percent, and some of that has to do with some permanent plantings going in, having a higher value, but our dairymen are suffering still. And that decrease would be equivalent to over thirty-six hundred milk trucks, you know, fewer milk trucks driving down the road. So, it's a significant loss to our local economy, and oddly enough, statewide, there's a big decrease in milk production, and in Tulare County, in 2016, we had forty-three percent of that decrease. So, we've got two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dairies. Last year, I reported that we have two-hundred-and-eighty-five, so we're losing dairies. I thought I would show a statewide figure, that the red line is milk production over the year since nineteen-fifty. The blue lines are number of dairies in the state. So, it's not looking good for dairy production. Our top five commodities haven't really changed much. Some have flipped from two to three. Cattle prices were pretty average to low. I've heard a lot of cattlemen say that, you know, they're not increasing their herd just because they want to, you know, stay low for a while and see where cattle prices go. And I thought it was interesting that on our top commodities, lemons were number ten. That's the first time ever on our top-ten list, and we've only got seventy-one-hundred-ninety acres of lemons in the county. So, it's pretty impressive, the value that they've come to. So, in the San Joaquin Valley, we've had majority of decreases in values, from fourteen-and-a-half percent in San Joaquin County, Fresno is minus seven, Kings was just under one percent. We're down eight percent, but Kern is up six percent. We're the most like Kern, but they had some higher values on some of their commodities and the same sort of increases in the nut crops. So, our overall value for 2016 is six billion, three-hundred-seventy-million, one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-six-hundred. And that's the fourth highest value that we've ever had. We had one year at over eight billion, one year at seven-point-nine, and so, this is still one of the higher values when you consider in 2010, we were under five billion dollars in value. So, with that, I'd take any questions or comments that you had.
Questions or comments? Supervisor Ennis, do you have any manure comments for the board?
Well, yeah, I saw manure was down.
As manure goes, so goes the county.
But if the dairy industry's in trouble, you're going to seek the lack of manure, so, no, no, great report. Always look forward to seeing this every year, but I wish we were still number one, but, you know, groundwater sustainability's coming. But, you know, just found what our sustainability is coming on us and that could shape the future too on how well our ag departments do. So, thank you, Marilyn, great job, as always.
Supervisor Worthley.
So, you didn't, what is our position? Are we number two then?
We're number two. It's the big three counties, Fresno, Kern, and Tulare. I can't imagine any of the others would come close.
One year Monterey was number three, I recall, some years ago.
They're usually in the 4.5 billion. I think they've already released though.
One thing, one comment I was going to make is it's always encouraging to me when I look at the replacement acres. So, as you look at our crop report, one of the, one of the things I look at is what are the non-bearing acres? Because that, that's the confidence, if you will, of the agricultural community. When that number gets zero, we're in big trouble, right? And we never have been there. But the idea is that farmers continue to invest and what we see is that replacement acres are their hope for the future, that their expectation is there. And that's, you know, that's our hope and I think, you know, it is a fluid situation. A comment was made about the Sustainable Groundwater Act, and I know that Kern County is expecting, under the best case scenario, that they would lose up to 20% of their agricultural irrigated crop base. And we know that Fresno was historically the number one county, and the reason they hadn't been for some years was because of the lack of water for the west side. And it's also important to remember that this is the 2016 report, so we were still dealing with the drought. We had a little bit better year that year water-wise, but there was still a zero allocation on the Friant Kern system. And so, it'll be a different report next year. Of course, all, all counties will have a rebound because of the good water year we've had this year. But, but let's not forget that we were still dealing with the drought conditions, and even so, as you say, the fourth highest year we've ever had. So, thank you very much for the report, Marilyn. Thanks for all the work there, you know, that goes into this. I always look forward to this and it just tells such a great story for Tulare County, what we're about. So, thank you.
Thank you, just did a very thorough report. Thank you. Thank you to all the staff that, you know, make this happen also. And is the fruit up for grabs after the meeting?
It is.
Those are some good looking pomegranates, you know. Thank you.
I've never heard someone evaluate pomegranates before. Go ahead Supervisor Crocker.
Well, speaking of pomegranates, my family, we contributed to the decline. We took that gamble and we lost, so. But I appreciate this. This is, this is a great document and it's, I appreciate all the hard work and the great partnership that we've had over the last year with your department and I, I thank you for that.
You know, Marilyn, one thing you didn't really touch on too much was the exporting of these crops. And I think that's really, really is worth mentioning. If you get a chance to look at this report and see the number of countries that our crops that are grown right here are sent to, I mean, there's over 75 different countries that are listed here. And, you know, number one is Korea and all the way down to the smallest in Guyana. And that's a pretty incredible feat that the crop is grown here and is exported to literally all over the world. And I think that says a lot about what you have to keep track of and the work that your staff does and the work that's done here by our local farmers. So, a great year. We will be number one again. Supervisor Worthley doesn't want to retire being number two. So, he's going to do whatever he can, like Kern County does, to artificially boost their numbers. And with that, great report, keep up the great work and I look forward to next year and whatever interesting cover you will bless us with then, so thanks.
You know what it is on the cover?
Like seedings.
It's seed onions.
Yeah.
What is that?
Seed onions.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought they were flowers.
Thank you.
Yeah, big farmer, big farmer.
Come on, I'm just joking, come on.
You've got to have flowers before you have seeds.
As Kevin Day, our UC Director, said, they're either onions or onions that went to seed. Thank you very much.
But you know, Marilyn, just before you leave, I think it's going to always be hard pressed to come up with a better cover than you had last year, where they had the front of the cow on the, on the front and the back of the cow on the back. That was a classic, I really.
We tried to move it around commodity groups, so.
I thought Rhonda was going to do that on the mural, but.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you, Marilyn.
The front of the cat and the back of the cat.
Okay, now, we do have a 10 o'clock timed item, which is our budget hearings. And right now, we can't start before 10. I know that, so that's why I'm saying, should we adjourn to closed session? Okay, we have a brief closed session and we will reconvene to take up our 10 o'clock timed item, which is why everyone's here, I think, so.
All right, and Mr. Chairman, we do have one item, item A on agenda.
Pull your microphone down.
We do have one item, item A on agenda, and I do expect an announcement out.
Hey, before you guys go, Kyler, Mike, who do you have to watch?
This is Deanne Peterson, County Council, reporting out on September 19th, 2017 at 9:50 a.m. On the motion of Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, and a 5-0 vote, the Board of Supervisors authorized legal counsel to initiate litigation. After the action is formally commenced, the title and nature of the action, the defendants and other particulars will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the county's ability to effectuate service of process and one or more unserved partners, or would jeopardize the county's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. This concludes the reporting out for today.
You see, cotton was up last year. Cotton went from 10,000 acres to 13,600.
It used to be we had 150,000.
A lot of water. We have water. They couldn't.
No, it was more about the dairies. There's more about the dairies. The dairies came in and what was the cotton land became.
Okay, that's, sorry about that, Mike. I don't see any.
Hey, no, that's the, that's some of the problems are that, you know, some of these non-permanent crops, you can shift, but if you lose the infrastructure because of the shift, it's hard to regain that. So, like the gins, the gins go out and they say.
All right, good morning again. It is 10 a.m. This is the time and place set for the item number three on our board agenda, which is the public hearing regarding our budget hearings. I will now turn it over to the CAO for introduction and overview.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. The matter before your board today is the recommended budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018. The budget amounts to approximately $1.2 billion for all applicable funds, and the budget is balanced, as required by law, fiscally sustainable and economically sound. In summary, when compared to last year's budget, this budget that is recommended to your Board of Supervisors is stronger, as evidenced by the following. The general fund budget, the OO1 budget, primarily consisting of the operating departments, increased from 1,715 million to 752 million. General fund discretionary revenues increased from 156 million to 159 million. General discretionary revenues are primarily property taxes and sales taxes, amounting to just about 70% of the general fund revenue, which is used to distribute for the operating budgets. The general fund balance of the OO1 budget increased from $31 million to $38 million. And the reserves, the savings account, if you will, is proposed to be increased from $26 billion to $28 million. The basic message, the overall theme of this budget is essentially investment. Investment in the essential services, investment in communities, investing in the people of Tulare County. For example, with respect to investing in essential services, this has been primarily done by improving public safety, environmental health, and economic well-being through the county's economic development strategy. Investing in communities means providing safe neighborhoods, safe streets, safe routes to schools, safe parks, and safe drinking water. And most importantly, investing in the people of Tulare County means helping to improve their quality of life through the effective delivery of medical, mental health, and other socially related human services. This is one of the largest and perhaps the strongest budgets that is being recommended to your board, and this is a reflection of well over 10 years of fiscal stewardship and fiscal prudence practiced by this Board of Supervisors. And it is expected to continue for many years in the future. We begin with very good news, and that good news emanates from the financial strength of Tulare County. And there is evidence, subjective evidence, to support this conclusion. First, the credit rating of the county currently is A+, which is investment grade, meaning that the outlook for Tulare County by Wall Street is stable. Secondly, another primary ingredient of financial strength is growth in assessed valuation or growth in property taxes. This year, the assessed valuation grew by a little over $1.4 billion in Tulare County, which is a growth rate of 4.48%. And there is a slide that we will be covering later on, which reflects that the last three fiscal years, the property tax or assessed valuation growth rate exceeded 4%. The CPI is 2%. The national growth rate is 2%, but Tulare County's local growth rate, and probably the most important funding source with which this budget is supported, is going at a good clip at over 4%. Wall Street will look at that. The total budgets for all funds is $1.2 billion, the largest, and that's a $50 million increase. The general fund budget is 752.8 million as proposed, which is just about a $37, $38 million increase. General discretionary revenues, again, $159.3 million is being proposed as a conservative estimate, and that's a $3 million increase. Last year, the general discretionary revenues were adopted at 156 billion. The year before, it was 154 million. That's about a 2% growth rate, which is a reasonable, conservative, and sustainable way in which the budget. The general fund net county cost, that's basically the difference between the expenses and the revenues of all general fund departments in the OO1 account, was $197 million. That's an increase of $10 million. Last year was $187,000, and that is basically the general fund support to the departments in order to allow operational growth and the delivery of public services. Of that $10 million, approximately $7 million was allocated to salaries and benefits. So, there's only net about a $3 million influx of revenue in order to keep the departments General fund balance, $38.2 million. This is the general fund balance in the OO1 account. That is the difference between the revenues, the expenses, and the net county costs, that's what's left over. That increased $7 million from $31 million last year. The reserves, this is an exercise in prudent savings to prepare for an economic downturn, to prepare for economic reverses, as we will talk about in connection with the outlook for the economy. We are in a good position right now in that the stock market is at its highest level ever, and it keeps climbing. But what goes up must come down. And this fund, these reserves, are to anticipate the shocks that would need to be absorbed. In addition to the reserves, there is refunding for contingencies at $5 million. So, that's about $33 million that we have ready to go in case something happens. Then we're proposing another million dollars in emergencies for fires, floods, tree mortality. And this board and this audience knows full well, during the past several years, fires and floods have affected Tulare County, and this is another reserve, if you will, that is lodged within the general fund, so this board can have ready access to funding if needed in order to support any funding gaps that may occur with respect to not being reimbursed by other federal authorities or state authorities when emergencies do arise. The millennium fund investment value presently, it is at $55.1 million. And the board recently adopted, approved, a $3.5 million appropriation in order to support the capital investment program, which is so ably run here in Tulare County. New building permit value, this year is $197.4 million. And there will be another slide where I will go through how the economic development strategy that was implemented at a very aggressive rate during the last four years has contributed in new building permit value alone, $790 million, which is three quarters of a billion dollars. Road projects, which exemplifies investment, public safety, facilitation of commerce, which is so important to economic development. The road projects for this year are proposed to be $40.4 million. Long-term debt, which is a huge success story and indicative of the nuanced fiscal skill of this board, is $4.1 million, $4.1 million. And recently, at our last board meeting, we had the opportunity to end, in a very favorable way, the termination of various agreements relating to certificates of participation, which were funded in the 1990s, a little over $100 million, all paid off. And all the facilities, primarily criminal justice facilities and others, were constructed and have been operating through the wisdom of this Board of Supervisors. And now we are positioned, if the need arises, to incur additional debt after proper due diligence, evaluation, and discussion, but this board is in a position now in order to consider further debt if necessary. Workers' Compensation Fund. Few years ago, this fund was in a deficit position, as reported in our financial report, of approximately $10 million. Through the combined good faith effort of council, risk management, the auditor controller, the county administrative office and this board, we have realized a $2 million deficit in workers' compensation, and we will continue along those lines. And this is another indicator of strength in the sense that even when there is a fiscal challenge, we have a plan and we implement that plan and we have measurable results. Wall Street likes that when evaluating our financial condition. Next slide, please. All right, as this county is a political subdivision of the state of California and respects, we are the agent of the state, this is a perpetually living organization. And as a perpetual organization, you have the opportunity to do good things, an opportunity to realize achievement. But along with achievement comes future financial challenges. And those challenges are a result of the economy, they're the result of federal mandates, state mandates, or things that are occurring within our own boundaries. And through the good offices of this board, they're not running away from the problems, they're embracing the problems. They're embracing the problems. And they're embracing the problems with transparent, diligent effort through the ad hoc committee system. And for the next two years and beyond, there are a number of financial challenges with which this board should be concerned. First, is retirement benefits. This relates to the payment of unfunded actuarial liability. Again, through the good offices of this board, for the first time, this budget, the proposed budget, contains a total compensation chapter where it reflects in detail what this board appropriates in terms of compensation, which is salaries and benefits. It's not only colas. It is benefits. One of the benefits are retirement benefits. As a result, over the years, the county has incurred an unfunded liability of over $200 million. And it's approaching $300 million. And so the question is, what do we do? Do we let it grow? Or do we do something? In addition, a concurrent challenge is that in order to pay off this unfunded liability, which is dynamic, not static, meaning that it can grow, the challenge to the general fund each year will be a several million dollar increase and shortly approaching double digits. If we do nothing, this will be a major problem. If we do something, we can methodically phase out the unfunded liability in a way that is manageable for the board and manageable for the departments. The next major challenge, and this is a good challenge to have, in a sense, because we are focusing on the operations of criminal justice facilities. As I've been talking to a number of people outside the county, this county has been able to secure funding exceeding $100 million without incurring debt in order to construct two new state-of-the-art criminal justice facilities. Along with that comes operations. Operations manifested in terms of staffing, health, IT, and internal services. And again, the good offices of this board is focusing on this problem in connection with our departmental partners so that there can be a seamless transition to operating and implementing these important facilities that are consistent with the first goal and initiative of our strategic management business plan, which is to promote public safety and security for the people of Tulare County. The next challenge, again, in connection with providing public safety, is the fire department. At our last ad hoc finance committee meeting, the chief, through his good efforts, presented in good faith a proposal for the future, a strategic financing plan, if you will, for the capital needs, the fixed asset needs, and the staffing ratios. And in keeping with the boards of the past and in keeping with the board of today, I'm confident and convinced that a reasonably acceptable program that will be helpful to the department, helpful to the people, and sustainable for this county. The next future challenge, challenge, if you will, is improvements. Improvements with respect to roads, bridges, water, wastewater, stormwater infrastructure, and parks. And I'm highly confident that these areas will be adequately and effectively addressed by the board working in close cooperation with the departments. The next one is the structural balancing of departmental budgets, ongoing and one-time expenses. Even before formally addressing this issue through this budget, we have tackled the issue and brought about successful results in reaching structural balance or close to structural balance for two key departments. And that is a real success story. And I thank those departments for their cooperation. The next one, in the next couple of years, Health and Human Services, based upon their review of all the activity that is going on in the medical care field, will be facing some challenges for which the general fund will have to evaluate the magnitude and the degree to which further support at increased levels of service will occur. And the three areas that have been identified at this time are affordable care, realignment funding, and in-home support. And this will be one of the presentations before ad hoc to see what's the magnitude of the problem? What are the options? What are the revenue sources? And then I'm convinced that the good work of the board will be carried out. The final challenge, and there is a lot of great effort being expended here, and that is employee health benefits. That deals with healthcare rates, health insurance rates, reserves and loans. And through the SJVIA, in conjunction with council and the HRD department, great strides are being made in order to address this future challenge. Next slide, please. All right. Let's now turn to the economic outlook. There are a number of economic indicators to suggest, well, how's the economy doing? Are we going to enjoy further growth, revenue growth? Or should be cautious that in short order, there may be some economic decline, contraction, which could result in a reduction of revenue, which unfortunately can impact the delivery of service. So what are some indicators? Let's look at the business cycle. We're still in the expansion phase. The Consumer Price Index is 2.1%, still increasing, but it's a modest growth rate. The unemployment rate at three levels. U.S. is 4.3%. State is 5%. Tulare County is 12.3%, although high, but it is declining. Interest rates. The cost to borrow money. The Fed Fund's target rate is between 1 and 1.25%. The national debt, which is a problem, is approaching $20 trillion. Inflation, the increase in costs, is at 2%. But that is the target rate of the Federal Reserve. That is a good indicator. And then another one at the local level is building permits. You look at building permit activity to gauge what's going on in the private sector. And once again, breaking all records, the building permits issued through the Resource Management Agency in conjunction with Health and Human Services, Fire, and other partners exceeded $4,000. So what's the economic outlook? It's optimistic, but there should be cautious optimism because it's been about seven or eight years since we have had a decline. Well, the last decline was pretty brutal and it caused a lot of difficulty. So we're preparing for the future. It looks reasonably good. However, that is the reason, Mr. Chairman and others, we are proposing that we should continue prudence and save in terms of reserves, contingencies, emergencies, stabilization accounts, and so forth. And that is how we're going to prepare for the market correction and the economic downturn. So how do we do that? We engage in a year-round process of budgeting with the departments, at the CAO, in conjunction with the board. It is year-round, where we do planning, we do forecasting, we do target growth for the departments, and it's all grounded upon the concept of sustainability. Sustainability doesn't mean estimate. It does not mean estimate all the revenue that is conceivable. It doesn't mean spend all the revenue on operations. It means to diversify. Operational growth, savings, and capital investment. And that's what this budget and prior budgets have done. So what we're also going to recommend is to continue the economic development strategy for Tulare County. This is an artificial way, a dynamic way of increasing the budgetary pie because we're not just being reactive to receive the revenues through assessed valuation growth. We're trying to actively promote economic development, increase revenue. And as you will see a slide, we have been doing that. And one of the key factors is one of cooperation. Cooperation with our cities. Cooperation with the state. Cooperation with the federal government where you're partners together with regard to programs and projects such that we can continue to increase that assessed valuation. And that, we can say resoundingly, has been done for the last several years. All right, let's turn very briefly to the state budget. The total budget for the state of California was $183.2 billion. Of that, the general fund was $125.1 billion, a $3.6 billion increase. The rainy day fund set aside was $8.5 billion. And they're at 66% of the state's goal of reaching $12.5 billion. What are the key priorities of the governor's budget? Maintaining fiscal prudence, paying down debts and liabilities, investing in education, counteracting the effects of poverty in improving streets, roads, and transportation infrastructure statewide. Here is an example of what we've done for the past four years with regard to trying to artificially expand the revenue picture for Tulare County. This is a chart spanning four years of the economic development strategy which is implemented through strategic management. If you drop down to the total column, so I'll run through it fairly quickly. Planning projects over the last four years were just about 1,500 approvals. Building permits were 15,000. The building permit value generated from these 15,000 permits was $791 million, almost 3/4 of a billion dollars. Of that, specific economic development projects were 290 and generated from that was almost $408 million. The strategy is working. Next slide, please. Our strategic management. The general framework of this county's strategic management and business plan adopted by the board in 2006, updated in 2016, 10 years later, and it will be refreshed in the near future before this new board, consists of four major goals. These goals guide how we propose the spending of money. We're doing it strategically, proactively, not reactively, or in a disconnected fashion. And the four goals are, one, public safety and security, economic well-being, in other words, economic development, quality of life, public health, organizational performance. The approach with regard to strategic management is to match the strategic goal with the budget goal. In other words, in your budget narrative, there is a discussion by each department of the four goals and how they intend to meet it. One of the key success factors associated with making strategic management work at the operational level such that you have measurable and meaningful results is the alignment principle. That is when a department proposes their funding requests, they have to try diligently to match the goal. How is this funding going to implement one or all of these strategic management goals? This is one thing that Wall Street looks at, too. Are you strategic or are you reactive? And this budget book is replete with example after example as to how this has been done. All right. Our approach in this office when engaging departments with regard to budget discussions is how to get to yes. Not no, but how to get to yes. And although it may not be yes today, it could be yes partially. And it could be measured in time. And that is essentially a discussion of timing and phasing of budgetary goals or budgetary expenditures through a feasible implementation plan. And I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, many, if not all, the departments, when they come to our discussions, engage in that process. And that's a good thing. Okay, some examples. What I've tried to do after looking at the budget narratives as a group, the departments that have implemented with honor and with a high sense of achievement the goals associated with strategic management. So let's turn to the first goal, public safety and security. The sheriff and its distinguished professional staff continues to provide safe neighborhoods, safe streets throughout this county. The district attorney continues in that law enforcement effort by bringing those individuals who have committed crimes to justice. The public defender, in keeping with its constitutional mission to ensure that all defendants are given effective and adequate counsel is maintained very well. Probation has an excellent track record with regard to ensuring that the people of Tulare County continue to be safe when those offenders who have been convicted are out and about in our communities. And then finally, fire, with regard to the new leadership in the fire department. The fire department has performed at a stellar level with regard to addressing several wildfires and floods over the past two years. Economic well-being. Economic well-being. We can't do it without the assessor and the clerk recorder. I should put an office, in our office, for the assessor clerk recorder because this is critical to our budget. And through the assessor, we get the numbers that are important to determine to what extent can we grow and to what extent can we be sustainable. And then the clerk recorder measures those transactions which bring about an important change of ownership and a reassessment. So through the assessor and the clerk recorder, they have truly helped the economic well-being of this county, particularly in the last several years. The agricultural commissioner and sealer has done a fantastic job in leading, we will always be number one, Maryland, in leading the number one agriculture county in the world. How's that? You've done a fantastic job even during very difficult economic times and very difficult regulatory times. And the results of the agricultural commissioner and sealer, and still almost seven billion dollars, is outstanding. Resource Management Agency, roads and transit, this agency, working with others, has been instrumental in bringing about a very effective economic development strategy. And, and the key which has been communicated by this board and others is this. The public sector's duty in order to help society at large enjoy the benefits of life should prepare the conditions under which economic well-being can occur. And that's through improvements, be they roads, be they bridges, be it through transit, this is how commerce is facilitated in a safe manner. And the Resource Management Agency has certainly done that. The next is Teleri County Association of Governments. They have been instrumental in, in helping this county with regard to funding allocations, especially measure our allocations in order to do a number of creative projects. One of them is the farm-to-market projects where several million dollars has been advanced in order for us to improve key roads in this county in order to facilitate commerce, especially for the dairy industry. And then finally, workforce investment. The statistics as articulated in the budget narrative are important and they're impressive with regard to how this organization has matched and paired candidates who are looking for work for real jobs. And that's a part of economic development. Economic development is not only value, the building of value, it's also about jobs, which leads to income. And through jobs, income and value, you have a successful economic development program and the Workforce Investment Board certainly helps in that regard. Next is quality of life. Through the guidance of the board and the administrative leadership, the water programs of Teleri County have been nothing but outstanding. A great deal of time, energy, effort and funding has been allocated to a key resource in this county, which is water, not only the supply of water, but the quality of water. And there will be a slide later where we will show how approximately three-quarters of, of a million dollars is being appropriated or recommended for appropriation by this board in order to continue the excellent work of the water programs. Health and Human Services Agency, this is the front-line agency in our department, the largest department, with regard to addressing the public health needs, the medical needs, the mental health needs and the social services needs of this county. And for the past several years, including today, this agency is run very, very well, especially in terms of delivering those essential services, those safety net services to the people of Teleri County. Human Resource, oh, pardon me, Child Support Services. Through the leadership, the new leadership, the Child Support Services, the department is running very, very well. As indicated by a recently received statewide performance award and also, as indicated in the budget, an increase, a substantial increase in the recovery of child support payments. UC Cooperative Extension, our research-based organization, which is looking how to help the future, doing a number of research projects, one of which is to help with child obesity in order to educate them as to how to improve their nutritional activities. The library, commendably, the library is doing very, very well with the opening of libraries in Farmersville and in London. And then all the programs that this organization is conveying to the community are all to try to help people get educated so they can not only help themselves, help their families, but contribute positively to the quality of life of society. Solid Waste, Solid Waste is doing very, very well. A number of years ago, this was a challenged organization, but with the leadership and staff of Solid Waste, they're in the black and they're doing projects, they're able to pay for projects, and so this is another success story. Now organizational performance. County Council. County Council, through its outstanding efforts, has been able to save this county over twelve million dollars, especially through their litigation expertise. They also save us a great deal of money with regard to reducing the service costs from outside council. But then county council also administers risk management, which is vital to this county because it basically provides for our insurance needs. And over the past two years, the CAO has worked very closely with county council and risk management, as well as the auditor controller, to really organize the finances of this operation in a very successful way, and we have done that. For example, last year, last fiscal year, there was a Cow Cap audit where, based upon certain activities, there was a requirement to rebate several million dollars. We have done that successfully. The departments have done their work diligently. And as a result of that combined collaborative effort, county council and risk management is truly a stalwart in organizational performance. Similarly, human resources and development. I talk to its departmental leader like all the time and sometimes it's bad news, but it always turns out, because of the collaborative and the cooperative efforts, to be good news. Examples are the outstanding way in which labor negotiations were handled and the results thereof. In addition, managing the claims that come through this county, I can say that HRD performs very, very well and very collegially. General Services and Capital Projects, this is a huge success story. This organization has been turned around in terms of the services that are provided to the departments through general services and through capital projects. The budget for this year is seventy-five million dollars. That's huge, that's tremendous. And I cannot say enough for the strategic and operational manner in which this department is conducted such that results matter and results occur. Purchasing a critical department within our organization, this allows us to buy the things that are needed in order to deliver the services and purchasing now and always has been doing outstanding, an outstanding job. Information Communications and Technology, this is not only the future, but this is today. IT has always been there for the county council, I was, I should say, county council too, I suppose, and the CAO in order to try to improve the quality of the hardware and the software of technology that is so vital in order to get things done. And one example is that there's continued, a continued funding commitment proposed of about one-point-five million dollars for a financial software upgrade which will ensure that the finances of this county are managed well. Registerar voters, under the auspices of the board and through the new leadership of the registrar of voters, some very positive things have occurred and we are delighted of the strategic approach towards counting ballots, which is perhaps in a democracy, a very important activity. The right to vote is a constitutional right for which we fight abroad to ensure that people have a say, a democratic say, in their government. And through the leadership of the registrar, that right will continue to be developed and expanded. Auditor Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. During the last few years, the collaboration with the auditor controller has improved. They continue to get awards with regard to their activities. They helped us in a number of areas, in particular, the Cow Cap audit, and I'm truly grateful for the service of the auditor controller, in particular, the auditor controller, Rita Woodard. Treasurer, Tax Collector. TOT was increased through their diligent efforts this year by over a half a million dollars. That's a success story. County Administrative Office. I want to thank the year-round effort of the professional staff that has to just about, just about worry about everything, and I want to thank them for their professional effort in getting things done. Next slide. Budget Protocol. These are basically the guidelines, the framework within which the budget is structured and Number one, historically, normal revenues are budgeted, in which case conservative revenue estimates are budgeted. Over the last ten years in particular, this has been the approach as to how to budget. We don't budget everything that is projected or forecasted because if it doesn't come in, then we have an operational problem at the budget level. So we generally take a two-percent increase in budget revenues in keeping with growth rates and in keeping with a sustainable way in which to structure operating budgets. Two, the proceeds from sales of reproperty are designated for future capital needs, which the board has been doing. Thirdly, and this is important, with respect to the interaction as between the CAO and the departmental budgets, we try to focus on the use of one-time funds for one-time purposes. The reason is that the use of one-time funds means that it's not guaranteed for the next year. The department will have to come in, make their case, show how they're aligning their budgetary request with a strategic goal, show how they've made an effort to generate new or expanded revenue, make another diligent effort to show how operational efficiencies have been, have been made such that any budget request is not going to be ongoing or structural means that it goes back into the budget the next year. So, leading to a structural increase, or another way of saying it, the ongoing budget increase, is that a department must reflect due diligent analysis of recurring revenue opportunities and operational efficiencies. And I have to commend all the departments. Almost all of them bring memos in order to try to justify their budgetary requests, and that's in keeping with a very prudent due diligent, due diligent approach. Finally, and most importantly, the fiscal sustainability of proposed budgets must be assured. Their budgetary requests, in other words, must be reasonable and it's sustainable by looking at what revenue they can bring in or what cuts they can make to their budget so that there's give and take with regard to their operational requests. All right, so for this year, what types of one-time expenditures are being proposed? Reserves to be increased, two million. The contingency budget, which is within the general fund OO1 budget, is proposed to be refunded at five million dollars. When I was Assistant CAO ten years ago, it was a three million, it grew to four million. Now we're at five million, and that's a good thing. It shows reasonable growth to protect the county against fiscal shocks that may occur. And we haven't had to touch that budget since the Great Recession. Emergency Response, this is for fires, floods, tree mortality, a million dollars. Pension Stabilization, one million dollars. The past several years, we've been putting, funding at the, at the level of one million dollars. This would make three million dollars in a trust fund, but it goes into the treasury pool, which generates a little bit more than one percent. And so, for example, at the ad hoc committee of the finance, financing plan, we've been discussing the possibility of maybe putting it in what is known as a Section 115 Internal Revenue Co-Trust, where according to projections, it could make between four and five percent return as opposed to a one-and-a-half percent return. But pension stabilization is just part of a bigger picture with regard to retirement. And we're also considering possible debt financing with regard to how to address the growing unfunded liability, which is approaching three-hundred million. Economic Development, like last year and the year before, we're proposing to set aside one million dollars for economic development. What does this really do? It does several things. Let's say there are federal or state grants that are necessary for infrastructure. And all too often, there is a local funding match, money is used for this. Or let's say, unfortunately, there may be a cost overrun with regard to a budget because of unforeseen events, this funding is there in order to address that kind of overrun. And also for a new project that may occur that wasn't contemplated at the time of the adoption of the final budget, where it may be to work with the city, it may be to work with a special district or some other organization that through the joint efforts, we could collaborate and bring about a successful result for the community. Parks Development, a million dollars is being set aside for parks development. And based upon the good offices of the General Services Department, a proposal's been made, which has been approved by this board, that this year, we're not undertaking the large-scale projects, which may consume a lot, if not all, of the resources. But we're getting back to basics and trying to address those smaller to moderate-scale challenges in the parks in order to make them more hospitable and more attractive to the community. The next one, which I just mentioned, in keeping with trying to keep Teleri County in the twentieth century in an important area of financial management, one-point-five billion dollars is being proposed for the continued financial software upgrade. And before the end of the year, I'm confident that there will be a good comprehensive report submitted to this board, recounting all of the activities, all the projects and all the successes of the IT department. Now we turn to litigation. We live, as this board knows, in a litigious society. So at abundance of caution, based upon a number of clouds that may be forming out there, we're proposing to set aside two million dollars to be put in the trust fund for litigation needs. And then finally, Conflict Defender Contingency. There's about three million dollars, the Conflict Defender Contract, but there are continuing defense needs as a result of large-scale prosecutions, arrests and prosecutions that have occurred during the last two years, and there may be an agenda item coming real soon to present to you a justification for further financing in order to ensure the constitutional defense of defendants. There's another very important reason to ensure that there is adequate support for conflict offender. If there is not effective and adequate assistance of counsel, appellate courts are inclined to reverse convictions and has to go back and be retried. We try to avoid that in the first instance by ensuring that the conflict offender has those financial needs for defense costs, for attorney costs, to try to reduce the likelihood that that unforeseen event may occur. Continuing with regard to one-time expenditures, the county fire fund, it's being proposed that additional nine-hundred thousand be provided in order to support the continuing operations of this very important department. Having said that, because historically, there's been just about a five-to-six million-dollar contribution by the general fund to keep that department going, this is an additional nine-hundred thousand. That's why it's appropriate that this important department, this vital department, come to the Strategic Financing Committee to lay out what their future needs are, what their financial options are, and then how best, through a transparent discussion, we can get there. And I'm confident that we can. Capital Projects. The proposed appropriation from the general fund to capital projects is six-point-six million dollars, broken down as follows, three-point-one million for capital projects plus the three-point-five million dollar Millennium Fund appropriation that was recently approved by your board. But the whole budget is seventy-five million. It's not six-point-six million. This is an extra injection of capital for capital projects to ensure that there is prudent investment in improvements in order to sustain the future of Teleri County. Sheriff's Department. A two-point-seven million dollar contribution is being made because of the excellent way in which the department is operated, in the sense that there is justification for this contribution, and it's the result of really no new money, but money that has fallen back to fund balance. There's a concept that when you appropriate, departments have to spend. If they don't spend all, it falls back to fund balance. And historically, it has been a basis of discussion, negotiation, if you will. How much new revenue have you brought in? How much have you saved in terms of operational efficiencies? And then, how much have you returned to fund balance? That's called the fall to fund balance. And basically, our revenues that we look at very closely in this office are the growth in assessed valuation, the growth in sales taxation and the fall to fund balance. That's how we manage our budgets. And in this case, that's what occurred, and so we were able to do it to help the department run successfully and yet, and yet not cause impact to the general fund. Same thing with the district attorney, same concept. Nine-hundred thousand is being proposed. The water programs, approximately seven-hundred thousand dollars is being suggested for appropriation in order to continue the outstanding efforts with respect to the management and implementation of these programs at the board. County Council, in order to work towards structural balance, two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars is being provided, and I think that will help the department in really expanding its opportunities in order to continue to provide outstanding performance to this county. Step Up Program. A program designed to help youth A program designed to help youth, to ensure that they have exposure to good-quality programs so that they will grow well and not become a burden to society, four hundred thousand is being proposed. And the homelessness program, increasingly, at the state level, this has been garnering a great deal of statutory attention. And so, this is to ensure that this problem is addressed strategically, proactively, not in a reactive way, so that the problem does not magnify and become a serious problem for Tulare County. So, it's with pleasure to propose this suggested appropriation. Fiscal sustainability. Alright. Based on this discussion, and viewed within this perspective of financial strength and excellent, truly excellent departmental performance, the recommended budget provides the following three things. One, reasonable operational support for departmental service growth. Two, prudent savings for reserves, contingencies, emergencies, and retirement stabilization. And three, long-term investment in capital improvements for county-based facilities, water infrastructure, roads, and bridges. This is textbook for prudent financial management. Let's turn now to the local application of this budget, and that's our proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18. The brief table of contents of the information that I'll be providing is listed as follows. A general fund five-year history. General county revenues. Local assessed value and property taxation. Sales and use tax allocation. Statewide Proposition 172 sales tax. A comparison of county funds. A comparison of authorized staffing. And county departmental budgets. Okay, let's now turn to our general fund five-year history. This is generally the operating funds, the departments that are on the front line with the public, the departments that provide public service. In its five-year history, starting at 2013-14, you see in the middle column that the budget amount that was approved and appropriated was almost six hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. That grew by one percent the next fiscal year, 14-15, to six seventy-four by one percent. 2015-16, the general fund budget grew to seven hundred and nine million, which is five percent. 16-17, it grew by seventeen fifteen, or seven fifteen million, a zero point eight four percent. And from 16-17 to 17-18, there was a five point three percent increase in the general fund budget to almost seven hundred and fifty-three million dollars. The general fund budget is composed of three elements. The revenues that are generated by the departments, either through subventions from other governmental agencies, grant revenues, fee-based revenue, and other funding sources that total up to revenues. The next column is the expenses. That is the cost to run the department, the cost to pay for labor salaries and benefits, the cost to deliver service. And then there's the net county cost. That's the difference between the revenues and the expenditures and the net county cost. And that's where the general fund, through the CAO and the board, comes in to fill that gap that's necessary in order to ensure reasonable and imprudent operational growth, so that the departments can deliver effective community service. So, seven fifty-two point eight is the proposed appropriation for the general fund. Now, general county revenues. This is the bread and butter. This is the financial wherewithal with which the county provides a great deal of its funding for the departments. And there are a number of categories. Secured property taxes, motor vehicle taxes, local sales taxes, Prop 172 taxes, and all other, which would include, as examples, transit occupancy taxes, tilt from the federal government, and franchises. Those are just some examples. The bottom line, under the total column, you can see going from left to right, from FY 15-16 to the proposed recommended, is that general county discretionary revenues, otherwise known as general purpose revenues, went from one hundred fifty-nine, one hundred fifty-three point nine million to one hundred fifty-six million to one hundred fifty-nine million dollars, about a two point oh nine percent increase, and that is conservative. That is prudent. That is reasonable in keeping with general growth rates around the country and in the state. As you can see, the lion's share of general purpose revenue is property taxes and sales taxes. If there is a decline in assessed valuation, is there, if there's a decline in sales taxes, that's a warning sign to us, and we watch these figures fairly closely throughout the year to see if the estimates will come in, because they're only estimates as a budget, it's not guaranteed, and we address any concerns at mid-year or through special appropriations through agenda items. Next slide. Local assessed value and property taxation. If you look at the first three columns, the purple columns, you see, starting from 16-17 to 18, there's been a reasonable growth rate, thirty-one point five billion county-wide, thirty-two point eight billion to thirty-four point three billion. That's an average change of four point six percent. That is very healthy. Sales tax. This goes up and down, because this is a function of commercial activity, people spending money. And the sales and use tax allocation hovers generally from 2011 to 2016, from seven point two million to eight point nine million. We're projecting a drop this year. Statewide Proposition 172 sales tax. Going from left to right, 2012 to 2017, this is a reasonably successful growth area of revenue. Twenty-two point two, twenty-two point zero million in 2012, all the way to thirty-one point seven million projected for 2017. Alright, comparison of county funds. This is the total budget. You have the general fund, other operating funds, like the library, fire, realignment, county service areas, enterprise funds like solid waste, transit, internal service funds, which generate out of general services to provide services, service needs for the departments and special district. Going from left to right on the total column, you can see the adopted budget in 16-17 for all funds, all in, was one point one billion. Then, it's recommended this year for one point two billion, which is a fifty million dollar increase, or four point three percent. This is a good growth factor. This is favorable fiscal news. Comparison of authorized staffing. The adopted budget last year for authorized staffing was four thousand nine hundred and forty-four point six three positions.
Is that someone just really short, or point six three, like, part-timers?
That's someone who shows up to where point six three percent of the time. And this year, the net change is fifty-nine, which is a total recommended position allocation of five thousand three point six three. So, that point six three person is still being proposed for allocation, which is a one point one nine percent increase in total workforce or authorized staffing, which is reasonable. It's a drop from last year of two point two one percent. And a lot of those positions are in health and human services. Alright, now, county departmental budgets. This is a collapsing of the number of budgets that are in the general fund, just to give you a good sense of where the money is going. Again, total budget is one point two billion. In the agriculture, research, and fish and wildlife area, eight million. To the public safety and public law departments, two hundred thirteen point seven million. In the land use, development, and infrastructure departments, twenty-four point seven million. For transportation, a hundred point five six million. For HHSA, six hundred and ten point three million. For property assessment, public finance and accounting, sixteen point two million. Assessment districts, county service areas, special districts and solid waste, the funding requested in total is twenty-seven point five million. Internal service funds, eighty-one point six million. Supporting county departments, ninety-five point three. And general government and operations, forty-nine point seven. Alright, coming to the conclusion of the CAO's presentation, I want to thank and acknowledge just about everyone, if I can do it, on one page. If I can name that tune, in one page. First and foremost, let me start with your board, the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the leadership, guidance, and support in seeing to it that this county is run strategically and managed well. Let me also thank the staff of the board, which provides invaluable support for the departments, the board, the CAO, and the public. The clerk of the board, let me thank that staff for the day-to-day, minute by minute, second by second performance that is carried out in order to ensure that the paper flow of this county is managed well in such a way that the business of this board, the governing body, can be officially and legally accomplished. So, thank you. County administrative office, thank you for your tremendous efforts in providing professional work in the areas of budget, finance, economic development, and general departmental operations. County council, let me thank you again for your terrific service, and especially with respect to the outstanding support in implementing the economic development strategy through the rapid approval of contracts that are so essential in getting those dollars out in order to get those improvements constructed. Human resources and development. Yes, I work with human resources and development quite extensively on a day-to-day basis, and I can tell you that the collaboration is appreciated, and your performance in many areas, especially in the area of managing the bargaining units, is outstanding and valued. And then, all the other county agencies and departments for your cooperation, your collaboration, your coordination, your good-faith interaction with regard to managing your operations well and delivering effective public service. Thank you. And then finally, the grand jury, as the watchdog of this county. Your interactions, your reports are excellent, so that you keep us on the right track. Thank you for that. Alright, Mr. Chairman, there are a number of requested items. I'm not going to read all of these now, because we are going to be going through these item by item by a rather formal narrative that historically is the procedure in order to legally adopt the proposed recommended budget, which then becomes the final adopted budget for the fiscal year, fiscal year 17 and 18. So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to turn, unless there are any questions or comments, I would like to turn to the formal narrative and get this process concluded.
Any questions or comments before we begin the formal process?
No, good job, CAO, on your presentation.
Well, I'm not sure exactly when, if, when is appropriate.
We'll go through the, there's a formal process to adopt the budget. As outlined, we have to adjourn, reconvene, because we represent several different authorities during this process, and then we'll get to the end before we adopt the county's budget. That's usually when we make extensive comments. And, Mr. Spotta?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the PowerPoint presentation. At this time, I would like to move forward with the budget hearing process. Do you want to open?
Yes, thank you, Mr. CAO. We will now adjourn as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District.
Initially, the suggested process is to present the enterprise fund with the board sitting as the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District, and the special fund with the board sitting as the Tulare County Flood Control District for your review, discussion, modification, and approval. The remainder of the funds will be presented for your review, discussion, modification, and final approval. The materials we'll be working with today are the recommended budget book and the agenda item, providing the order of the items. And your board just adjourned the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and convened as the Terabella Maintenance District. So, continuing, if I may. Enterprise funds are used to account for activity for which a fee is charged to external uses for goods or services. As such, I'm asking that the board adopt the fiscal year 2017-18 final budget for the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District and authorize the auditor controller to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the budget into final balance. If there are no specific comments or questions about this fund, I ask that the board take the action just described.
Any questions or comments?
Sure. Just a procedural question. Did you actually open the public hearing?
The public hearing, according to my script, will be opened after this, but I will open the public hearing for the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District at this time. Any questions or comments from members of the public related to the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District? Seeing none, I'll entertain the motion presented. Close the public hearing, entertain the motion presented by Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Worthley, on, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the enterprise fund and continue on with our hearing.
Could you read this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we will now adjourn as the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District and convene as the Tulare County Flood Control District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board reviews plans and project statements throughout the year for the Tulare County Flood Control District. As such, I am asking that the board adopt the fiscal year 2017-18 final budget for the Tulare County Flood Control District and authorize the auditor controller to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the budget into final balance. If there are no specific comments or questions about this fund, I ask that the board take the action just described.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Any comments related to the Tulare County Flood Control District budget? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for the requested action.
Move for approval.
Have a motion from Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we are going to adjourn as the Tulare County Flood Control District and reconvene as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. And board members, please bear with me, because there are a number of things, lengthy items that I must read into the record with regard to this and other budgets. Enterprise and assessment district funds are used to account for an activity for which a fee is charged to external users for goods and services. The funds include solid waste and solid waste closure operation funds, transit fund, and L&amp;M funds, landscape and maintenance, assessment districts. Examples, L&amp;M funds include the following. L-01, Arosi, lighting and landscape. L-05, Arosi storm drain. L-07, Poplar storm drain. L-10, Arosi storm drain. L-16, Early Mart, lighting and landscaping. L-60, Tipton storm drain. L-65, Early Mart storm drain. L-70, Cutler storm drain. L-75, Teviston storm drain. L-80, Early Mart storm drain. L-85, Arosi storm drain. L-86, Visalia Cotton Tail storm drain. L-87, Visalia Kapsu storm drain. L-88, Visalia District 13-792. L-89, L-89, Traver storm drain. L-90, Visalia storm drain 14-792. L-91, Visalia storm drain 16-767. M-03, Strathmore Road. M-04, Porterville Road. M-06, Visalia Acacia Road Assessment District. M-07, Poplar Assessment District. M-86, Visalia Cotton Tail Road Maintenance District. M-87, Kapsu Road Maintenance District. M-88, Goshen Road Maintenance District. M-88, Goshen District. M-90, Visalia District 13-792R. M-91, Visalia 14-792R. And finally... And finally, M-ninety-two, Road Maintenance District. CAO, continuing. If there are no specific comments or questions about these funds, I will move forward.
Questions or comments, Supervisor Crocker?
Yes, in solid waste budget, there's a request to, as part of an objective, to get into the construction and demolition, the C and D business. We currently aren't in that. We contract out with that, so I would like that removed as far as that. I believe that's a policy decision that needs to come before the board outside of the budget process.
Comments from supervisors?
Would you like a comment from the department head?
Sure, if Bryce is here and would like to comment on this, we can talk about this now. Bryce, if you would please come forward.
I think the question is, is that currently and over the last five or so years, we've been using an outside contractor to do the C and D processing work, which is a recycling program to recycle about fifty percent of the C and D material we get in. We get roughly around twenty thousand tons a year of material in. That program has cost us over the last five years roughly around a million dollars a year or so, somewhere in that neighborhood. We started using a different type of processing recently, a different company. We traditionally, when I've been here, we've used Peña's disposal to do that material. We asked for bids from both companies, Peña's and Cagliari. We got a lower price from Cagliari, went with them. I think your board made that approval. We looked at their processing. What has changed dramatically in that part of the world is that it used to be C and D processing required the sale of commodities, which is something that, quite frankly, county staff isn't very good at, at least I didn't feel like we were. So the private sector did that much better. What has changed dramatically is most of the sale of those commodities no longer takes place. So all of the material now that is a byproduct of the C and D processing stays on our landfill, is used on our landfill, either for, mostly for daily cover. A small percentage of it, metals, is sent off to a metal recycling. So that part of the business is fairly straightforward. We've contracted, we still, we have contracted for a long time for metals recycling at our site. We feel very comfortable with our current contractor. So the actual C and D processing is no longer a sale of commodities to wood markets or to paper products or other things. It's really being ground up, and this was a process that our current vendor has been using, Cagliari. So they brought in a slow-speed shredder, which shreds the material up after we sort of clean it up. We use it as alternative daily cover on our site. The residual from that process, the trash that's left over, we use on our site as well. In looking at those costs and looking at how much the vendor was going to charge us, the challenge was is we were going to need to raise rates to cover that cost. By us going to that vendor and saying, hey, we're looking at doing this internally, the vendor then lowered their cost fairly substantially. So now the vendor has proposed recently a cost to us that matches our gate rate inflow, our revenue cost. So basically, revenue neutral to us. The challenge that we saw, and that's why we decided to go forward with presenting a purchase of a machine of around eight hundred thousand dollars, is that we believe internally we can do that same exact job for about half the price. So we believe instead of it costing us, let's say, twenty thousand tons times around forty dollars a ton or eight hundred thousand dollars, so by just us talking to the vendor about us doing it internally, we've lowered our costs by about two hundred thousand dollars annually already. That's what we anticipate next year. If we do it ourselves, we believe our costs are going to be down around between three and four hundred thousand dollars. So we believe we're going to save about between three to four hundred thousand dollars a year in operating costs. The machine costs about eight hundred thousand dollars. If, let's say, after one year, we decide that we're not doing a very good job of this new thing we're going to do, we can easily sell the machine at fifty percent on the dollar. So we can easily recoup that four hundred thousand in savings almost immediately. So that's why we made the decision to go to the CAO's office and say, we want to take out of the budget the vendor cost for outside private sector to do it and for the county to do it internally. There's no other secondary equipment, very limited amount of people we have to hire, the process is fairly straightforward, and it was an eight hundred thousand dollar investment in new capital. That was our decision, and that's what we presented in our budget.
Any additional questions or comments? I can understand Supervisor Crocker's points that that can be a policy-type decision that we could have discussed separate and apart from the budget. However, because of the cost savings and your detailed description, I would be supportive of what you are requesting. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Bryce. Appreciate it.
All right, if I may, if there are no specific comments or questions about these funds from the board, I will move forward. The county service areas, number one and number two budgets provide for activities that are specific to areas and projects. Users pay fees for these activities. The funds are C-15 Lemon Cove Water, Z-oh-eight-one El Rancho Sewer, Z-ten Delph Colony Sewer, Z-eleven Delph Colony Water, Z-fifty Seville Sewer, Z-sixty Toniville Sewer, Z-seventy Tulieville Sewer, Z-eighty Traver Sewer, Z-ninety Yedam Sewer, C-ninety-one Yedam Water, Z-ninety-five Wells Track Water, and Z-ninety-six Wells Track Sewer. If there are no further, if there are no specific comments or questions about these funds from the board, I will move forward.
Questions or comments regarding these funds?
Internal service funds are used to account for goods or services provided by one department or agency to other departments or agencies. These funds operate on a cost reimbursement basis. The funds are county administrative office dash general services, copier services, custodial services, facilities, fleet services, ground services, mail services, print services, and utilities. County Council, risk management, general liability, medical malpractice, property insurance, and workers' compensation. Human Resources and Development, dental insurance, information and communications technology, communications and information and communications technology. If there are no specific comments or questions about these funds from the board, I will move forward.
Any questions or comments? Please continue.
Thank you. Operating fund budgets are the core funds that provide services within the county. The funds are aviation, building debt service, capital projects, child support services, community development block grants, fire, fish and wildlife, health realignment, home program fund, housing successor agency RA six, ICT special projects, indigent healthcare, library, mental health realignment, roads, social services realignment, tobacco settlement proceeds, and workforce investment board. If there are no specific comments or questions about these funds from the board, I will move forward.
Supervisor Crocker?
Does this include Sheriff's Department as well?
No, that's next. One final group of budgets comprises the general fund budgets, the O-oh-one fund, the number one fund, if you will. The funds are agricultural commissioner, sealer of weights and measures, assessor, clerk recorder, auditor controller, treasurer, tax collector, board of supervisors, capital acquisitions, central telephone services, citizens' option for public safety or cops, cooperative extension, county administration, county council, district attorney, general services, health and human services, human resources and development, Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act, miscellaneous administration, miscellaneous criminal justice, probation, public defender, purchasing, registrar of voters, resource management agency, rural crime prevention, and sheriff coroner. If there are no specific comments or questions about these funds from the board, I will move forward.
Okay, Supervisor Crocker?
The sheriff has requested nine additional positions, and based on our Strategic Finance Committee, one of the questions that was brought up during one of their presentations was the amount of vacancies that are in that department. CAO, your staff were able to present that at that point in time, there was one hundred and twenty-nine vacant positions, and over the past three years, there's been over a hundred vacancies each year. So I'm not exactly sure where the need is, if there's that many vacancies in that department.
Thank you, Mr. Crocker. Members of the board, you have raised an excellent question, and a question that is being analyzed by the board, by the CAO, and by the sheriff's office. These positions are essentially, and I'll ask the sheriff to come up to address them, but these positions are essentially for special needs that the sheriff has that are not currently being fulfilled by the existing vacancies. Human Resources and Development has analyzed these positions, the need. CAO has had discussions with the sheriff with regard to this, and a justification, a reasonable justification, was prevented for those needs. But I would like to respectfully request is that the sheriff approach the podium and amplify his request for the needed positions.
And the sheriff has exited the building.
Is there anyone from the sheriff's office here?
He was here, and his whole team was here too, but I don't know whether I know.
You know, I know other departments reclassified positions. They've made deletions and then additions as well, and so I, this is nine additional bodies, head count, that they don't already have. So that's, that's where I don't see, I don't see the strategic business case for that when you have a hundred and twenty-plus vacant positions currently.
The matter is understood, and this is an issue that should be addressed and needs to be addressed. And so the question for you, and unfortunately, the sheriff is not here, the question for you is whether we should continue with regard to this matter. You could express something with regard to freezing the positions, deleting the positions, or to suggest that we closely monitor these positions and have a report back either before mid-year or at mid-year to see if they're filled or they're just putting on the books in order to generate salary savings. There are a number of options that you do have. You could delete them. You could instruct that we monitor. You could instruct that they not be filled. There are certain things that you can do at this time.
Well, I guess my point would be, I would hope that our departments, if you have vacancies, that you would be filling those vacancies and having staff utilize and do the very critical tasks that we have as a county. So I don't know that I'm, I'm not opposed to these positions necessarily, but I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to fill the vacancies that are there. And so prior, before we go ask for more, that we're doing our case. So I don't know what the best, if that's a, if that's a freeze or if that's a review at mid-year to see whether or not that's happened, but I want to strongly encourage departments that if you have, if you have allocated positions, let's try and get those filled.
There are several things that we can do, Mr. Crocker, and I think you've really, you've really touched on an important point. And this office, this year, has put that on the table with regard to the departments, particularly the law enforcement departments. When we see vacancies, we ask them to either delete other positions or we give them a timetable by which they have to fill the positions. This is sort of somewhat aggressive, if you will, whereas perhaps it wasn't done as aggressively. The sheriff is a larger question, and that's why it's important that it be brought to ad hoc. Unfortunately, the timing is not congruent in that your final budget is proposed to you before really your ad hoc committee makes a recommendation with regard to the sheriff's budget. We could do this. We could have a report at mid-year. We could work, continue to work closely with the sheriff, have a report at mid-year, and if we feel that it is unlikely that these positions will be filled or no prospect that they will be filled, you could delete them at that time.
Do we know what the positions are that are outside of the realm of the vacancies?
Yes, we could have a report. The deputy CAO, budget and finance, could you articulate specifically those positions? Thank you.
So they're requesting to add two crime system specialist threes, flexibly allocated, two IT desktop technician threes, an office assistant, a department secretary, a paralegal one confidential, and two sheriff deputy twos. Those are their entire nine requests.
Seven of the nine are non, you know, technically non-safety, non-sworn, yeah.
I think in part, if I understood my colleague's question, also it has to do with what are the openings. So part of the issue here is because the size of the department, every department, I know Health Human Services also contends with this, they have a lot of empty positions, and there may be many reasons for that. Retirements, worker comp issues, there are vacancies that occur, and I think you can't take a broad brush and just say fill each one because it may be, some of them are filled quickly, some of them may have been empty for, may have been vacant for some period of time. I think that, and I guess what I'm getting at, I think there needs to be that kind of further analysis of those positions so that we can make an informed kind of, you know, decision about what's the proper allocation. I think, I don't think we can do that today, but I think that Supervisor Crocker brings a very good point because as we look at vacancies, we are funding vacant, we're funding positions. And if there is a history, if you will, of open vacancies and then perhaps some of the money that was being allocated for people is used for other purposes, I think that's something the board needs to be, you know, aware of. And so I think that may be kind of the heart of the question going forward. I don't have a problem with approving them today, but I do think we need to have monitoring of this, monitoring of the budget in terms of where the funds are being expended. Are they being expended on personnel or are they being expended for something else? And I think, you know, reports back to us and before the ad hoc committee would be appropriate. And looking at maybe at next year, and maybe this is not just something for public safety, but really at all of our departments, you know, are there, are there positions that we could be eliminating so we're not funding them and we don't have a reasonable expectation of filling them? I think that's something we want to avoid.
And maybe point six-three of positions too, for cleanliness of appearance.
Thank you. If I may make two comments. First, your point is very well taken. The county administrative office is on the same page with regard to this issue, and anytime you try to bring about transformational change, it's a challenge, and so you work incrementally. We're doing that through the Strategic Finance Committee. We're also doing that through heightened discussions with the departments with regard to the justification for new positions, looking for new revenues to support them or offsetting cuts. Sometimes you can't do that. That's where the net county cost comes in. So what we can do is continue to monitor this. I would suggest approve them today, but to instruct the CAO to work with the sheriff with regard to monitoring and reporting back at mid-year with regard to the vacant positions. But let me also say this. This is a function of history. At least for the past fifteen years, this approach with vacancies has been maintained. It's embodied in board policy where it is permissible to use vacancy salary savings to fund other purposes. So what we could do is at ad hoc and at mid-year, revisit this policy.
Right, and I, if I may follow up with, and the reason we need to follow up with this is because honestly, what is the budget? I mean, if we think about, let's just take any department's budget. If they intend to use these salary, if they intend to inflate the pool of employees that they keep open and then use funds for other purposes, let's just be upfront. What do you need, what are the other purposes that need to be funded? And let's have less allocation for personnel that's not going to be filled, and let's fund the needs that are being requested. I mean, that's the way it should be. That's a much more transparent way of governing and the way it should be done going forward. So I think this, this is a very important concept and topic for us and timely for us to be talking about because, and I realize too, some of this going back historically, some of it was when we had some very difficult financial times. And so with very difficult financial times, just having an operational budget was very difficult for our departments, and it became almost critical way of dealing with that. Don't fill positions right away. Keep those positions open for a period of time so you have salary savings that you can then meet your operational expenses. We're in a different kind of time now, a different type of financial situation. We don't need to have that kind of, you know, hand-to-mouth kind of existence, and so I think it's important for us to look at this from a very holistic approach.
The discussion is relevant and meritorious, and as such, I will conclude that you'd like our office, CAO's office, to monitor this, to bring it to ad hoc, to revisit it at our office, CAO's office, to monitor this, to bring it to ad hoc, to revisit it at mid-year in keeping with the need for the vacancies and also perhaps a fresh look at that policy with regard to utilization of salary savings for other, for payment of other operational expenses.
Mr. CAO, the Sheriff just walked in right now and if you would like to come forward, nothing like being called on on an impromptu basis, but the question is related to the nine requested additional positions. Chief Deputy CAO Alamanza went over the seven non-sworn, two sworn, but Supervisor Crocker had a question about the, why are you adding the nine additional positions when you already have over 100 vacancies within the department instead of reclassifying?
Well, these are different positions, as I remember right. The positions that are being requested for allocation are actually different in scope and design. If we go to reallocate or move positions over for the future of what we're doing in the next five years, we'll be coming back to the Board asking for those positions back. We're looking within, within that five-year plan that we gave you earlier with the jail services. It incorporates filling those already allocated positions, if that answers your question.
Yeah, my questions were, were already answered.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this, I think that what's really coming out of this is really a more of a policy question related to the use of salary savings in the, not just your department, but all departments using salary savings to sustain ongoing operations versus not having the money that's actually required for operations allocated at the appropriate time.
Sure.
So the, the ad hoc committee will be looking into that and then this too has been requested to be monitored between now and mid-year to assure that these nine positions in addition are actually utilized.
Right. I think, I think what becomes challenging sometimes is that we have the positions that we're moving forward in, we're not allowed to move forward in the hiring process. The Board usually, in good reason and good cause, is not, we're all the way into September for our hiring process. We come around for the full fiscal year and trying to get people into positions and sometimes we're way behind the curve in that hiring process. So I think that there is some things that do need to be looked at when we anticipate future filling of positions when we have, when, when we don't get the budget approved until, you know, much later than what we anticipate. Some of those, sometimes we are able to move forward, other times we're not, so it becomes a little complicated.
All right, well, thank you for coming forward and stay tuned as this process continues.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I apologize. We had to step out for a safety meeting and most of the staff is there now, so.
No problem, but thank you for coming back. Appreciate your response.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. CAO, you want to continue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, if there are no specific comments or questions about these funds from the Board, I will move forward. The general revenues budget makes up the bulk of the county's discretionary revenue and we're projecting 159 million this year from a variety of sources such as property tax, sales tax, et cetera. If there are no specific comments or questions about these funds from the Board, I will move Contingencies recommended at $5 million or as modified by your Board. That's basic in emergency fund and to withdraw funds from that account, Board action is required. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the final action requested today is to do the following. Adopt the final budgets for all funds and activities as modified during the hearings for the Enterprise and Assessment District Funds, County Service Areas 1 and 2, Special Districts, Internal Service Funds, Operating Funds, and the General Fund. Amend the Personnel Class specifications, Class Designations, and Compensation Changes subject to meet and confer. Amend the Position Allocation List reflecting adds, deletes, amends, and reclassifications subject to meet and confer. Approve a 3% Cost of Living Increase for County-Elected Officials consistent with the June 20th, 2017 Resolution 2017-0479 Action. Approve the Board of Supervisors Cost of Living Increase of 3% consistent with the June 20, 2017 Resolution 2017-0497 Action and pursuant to County Ordinance Number 344, which means the raise does not take effect until 90 days after the adoption of the final budget. And authorize the Auditor Controller to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the Fiscal Year 2017-18 Budget into final balance. That concludes my statement.
Okay, any questions or comments from Board members? Supervisor Crocker, before I open the public hearing?
You know, I didn't necessarily see anything regarding trust funds and I know certain departments have trust funds. Is there, I'd like to see a presentation of future meeting, it doesn't need to be today, but just for, you know, how those are utilized, which departments have them, what, you know, something that's a little more thorough that, because I, I think that there's a missing piece as far as the budget, as far as what, you know, how, how departments have, have maintained a conservative financial approach to their own specific department outside of what we're doing as a county as a whole. I'd like to see that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may respond briefly, I think that's an excellent point. Most of the trust funds are in the operating funds in the budget, like the realignment funds. However, in keeping with improved performance, organizational performance, as an example this year, we included a total compensation chapter to the budget. What we could do is have a trust fund chapter in the budget where in addition to what the legal requirements are, we have a special chapter that enumerates and describes and discusses to some extent our trust fund portfolio, if that is the direction of the Board that you would like me to bring back to you at some future date.
I like that idea.
Well, I can assure you that the Sheriff's Trust Fund has been fully depleted with the purchase of Deputy Busby costumes, just to let you know that. Any further questions or comments related to this?
Just a comment, there will be probably some final comments, but I did want to make one point and that is that when we look at the report that was given by the, by the CAO and thank you Mike, very good report and thorough, there was a comment about, you know, one of the financial strengths of the county is our long-term debt, which is $4.1 million. I think it almost has to have an asterisk by that because we have another long-term debt, which we don't reflect in this report, but it was alluded to elsewhere, and that's our debt on our unfunded liability for retirement. That sum is, we know it was about $230 million. Recently, the Retirement Board adopted a new discount rate, which will, that's the expected rate of return, that went from 7.5% to 7.25%. We don't even have the numbers yet and what that means for us, but we believe it'll approach $300 million of unfunded liability. The reason I want to bring that up is as the ad hoc committee looks at options for the county, one of the options we're looking at would be pension obligation bonds and the reason for looking at that would be, right now, we're being charged 7.25% by the Retirement Board on their unfunded liability. So it is a debt the county has. We have a debt. It's a big debt and it's getting bigger. If we look at the 7.25% that we're paying to them, we might be able to go out in the marketplace and perhaps do it for 5%, that's a significant drop. It would show then on this report, our long-term, if we did that, if we went and borrowed, let's say $200 million, all of a sudden our long-term debt number balloons. But actually, it's a substitution for another long-term debt. I think it's important for people to understand that. We're not looking at adding additional debt to the county. We'd be looking at substituting a debt which is more manageable for us to pay than the one that we're currently obligated to pay to the Retirement Board. And I just think that point ought to be made. Another quick thing about reserves, and I very much appreciate the fact our reserves are $28 million as proposed budget, but I would just reflect that in when I came on the Board 18 years ago, we had about a $600 million budget and we had a $25 million reserve. So our reserves are, are very small for the size of our budget. And we've talked about this in the past, about the need to try to build up that reserve because 20, you know, in a $1.2 billion budget, 28 million is not much money. And so the idea of building up that reserve is a good, again, responsible thing for future Boards, I won't be here for much longer, but for future Boards to continue to do because I know in the case of Kern County right now, they had had a large reserve and it has allowed them to survive, even though they've had to make major cuts, that's the, their large reserve has been very, very helpful for them in getting through these difficult times. So just a couple of comments and I'm very, very, very pleased with the budget, the progress the county has made, and there's many things we could talk about, about how wonderful things are, but I just want to point out those two things.
Supervisor Struckley?
No, I just want to thank all the staff that put in, I know, a lot of time and I guess tomorrow you'll start back on it again for next year. And CAO Spada, thank you and on your staff for all the work that's been put into this. Just one request with the five requested actions, will we be taking these individually or as a lump sum? I'd like to, I'd like to have a separate vote on item five.
Chair, just question?
Yeah, that's, I have no problem with there's, if there wants to be a separate vote. This was an item that was voted on by this Board earlier this year, so if you'd like that to be done separately.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to.
We could take that, we could take that up separately.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the five items individually or would you like to read them in the request vote? Either way is fine with me.
Yeah, when we, we can entertain a motion when we get to that time. I'm going to open up the public hearing before we get there, but I want to give Supervisor Ennis a chance to make any comments if you'd like.
Well, I just want to thank the CAO again for a great presentation. Think of all, think of all, thank all our department heads for working this budget out and making it work for you and thanks to all of our employees that make this thing work every day, so that's all I have to say.
And I just want to reiterate the comments made by my colleagues. I think this is an outstanding budget and it really is a tribute to the fiscal responsibility of this Board of Supervisors and of our financial departments year over year, but ultimately I want to thank all of the departments out there who deliver the core services each and every day to the residents of Tulare County. That's what this budget really is all about. It's, it's the backbone, the roadmap for delivering those services in this county and you do a fantastic job each and every day and this just finances you being able to do that. So I am grateful for that and I look forward to another great year. If there are no further questions or comments from Board members, I will now open the public hearing and invite anybody to make comment at this time if they would like. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the Board for action. We do have a number of requests in front of us. Mr. Spada, would you please read each request and we can take action at the end of each of these requests?
Yes, sir, I will do so. Item number one, adopt the FY 2017-18 Final Budgets for all funds and activities as modified during the hearings for the Enterprise and Assessment District Funds, County Service Areas 1 and 2, Special Districts, Internal Service Funds, Operating Funds, and the General Fund.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
I have a motion by Supervisor Worthy, a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes four to one with Supervisor Crocker voting against.
Two, amend the Personnel Class specifications, Class Designations, and Compensation Changes subject to meet and confer.
Move for approval.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis.
Second?
Second by Supervisor Worthy, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Please continue.
Three, amend the Position Allocation List reflecting adds, deletes, amends, and reclassifications subject to meet and confer.
Move for approval.
I have a motion from Supervisor Ennis.
Second.
A second from Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next?
Four, approve a 3% Cost of Living Increase for County-Elected Officials consistent with the June 20th, 2017 Resolution 27-0479 Action.
Move for approval.
Second?
I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Struckley, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next request?
Five, approve the Board of Supervisors Cost of Living Increase of 3% consistent with the June 20, 2017 Resolution 2017-0479 Action and pursuant to County Ordinance Number 3444.
I'd like to make a comment prior to?
Yeah, sure, if you want to make a comment.
Yeah, I just, I know in June I, I voted yes on this, but I've thought it out and until that we can repeal the Compensation of Supervisors, item E in the code that says when other elected officials receive a cost of living salary adjustment or any salary adjustment other than merit or performance, that the Board shall receive the average adjustment of these elected officers. I think it's a useless item to have in there and for us to get raises in that manner and so any raises I'll be voting against until we can change that.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Worthy, a second by Supervisor Ennis, and I'll just make a comment, this is nothing that was, is different from any other county employee. Please vote.
I know that. What happened, Phil?
Supervisor Struckley's no button does not work. Motion is approved, three to two. Supervisors Crocker and Struckley, I'm voting against. Last request?
Six, authorize the Auditor Control to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the FY 2017-18 Budget into final balance.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Supervisor Struckley and a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. That does conclude the budget hearing process for the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Thank you all for attending today's meeting and I hope you all have a great rest of the day. Council, do we have an additional need for closed session?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Thank you very much.